And I just want to say that Jaime Gomez has let me know that he will be here as soon as he can get here. After his back surgery, he's not sure he can make it through the whole meeting, but he'll be here sometime during this meeting. And Suzie Torado just texted me and said that she's running a little late. She had to had an important appointment in Hartford and got stuck there a little longer than she expected. So I'm assuming those other two board members will be here sometime during the meeting. And we certainly have more than a quorum now, so we're going to start off the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I know we just met last Wednesday, and we now have a special meeting of the Board of Ed. There are three items on the agenda. The first two items are a continuation of the discussion we started last Wednesday, and were at a point during that meeting where we couldn't really take action. We could discuss and take action on those two items tonight. And then we have an executive session for the third item on the agenda. So, let's get started. And when we left off, if I correct me if I'm characterizing this incorrectly, but when we left off last week, we had begun discussion on a recommendation that was made by the Board of Finance after their meeting last week to, well, at the last meeting we were at with the Board of Finance, their recommendation to take action, to approve a proposal made by them, and I believe voted on by them that evening that they met last regarding way to close out the budget year 2018-2019 without dipping into the town's undesignated fund balance. And there was some concern about the proposal that was put on the table, and so we agreed that we would get a little bit more information and come back today. I did share with folks what I received from the town manager. I forwarded it along to you via email regarding the special services funds that were proposed to be used. Does anybody need a copy of, a Xerox copy of that right now? I'll pass this over to, I'll take it.
Mary wants one.
Okay, there's a couple. Yeah, there's a couple copies. It's really hard to see on this. Yeah, they're two-sided.
It's two-sided, that's why.
It's the same one you mailed to us.
Oh, well, I must have handed you the original. Just take the thing with two sides on it. Okay. Two-sided? You have a two-sided one there?
This is one side, and this is two sides.
Okay, then you keep that one.
I was going to give it to her because she's.
This is my original, so. You may want this. I forwarded it. Dr. Garcia, do you need?
I have one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to open it up to discussion. Dr. Garcia, do you have it?
Yeah.
Well, I think I've made it fairly clear. I can't support this plan. This is, if anyone read the forensic audit, planning with an Excel spreadsheet rather than directly from the website and dipping into the health insurance funds, is exactly what we got in trouble for this year. I can't for the life of me understand how this plan came about. I also don't understand how you can take from the health fund a negative money and still leave it negative, but tell me you're paying money with that. It does, I wish I could figure out how to pay negative money with my budget at home. So this plan makes no sense to me whatsoever. I can't support this. I don't know what the town will do, but, and as far as the Board of Finance, I noticed that they met Wednesday, you said, and voted on some type, some plan, but the email came out Thursday. Because I was led to believe that the plan the Board of Finance voted on was the one we originally looked at at the beginning of August.
No, it wasn't. No, it was not.
That's what Board of Finance members have told me, so.
Well, they may not have understood what they voted on, then.
But the email from Jim is dated the 29th, which is Thursday. So, in any case, whether they did or didn't vote for it, I can't support this.
Okay, so they met, when was it, last Tuesday, correct? Not Wednesday? And several of us were at that meeting. As I reported to you when we met on Wednesday, the recommendation that was voted on in the meeting, as I understand it, was to take, in order to close the combined town and Board of Ed shortfalls, that they should take some money out of the Health Reserve Fund and some money out of excess money in the Workers' Comp Fund. That was the, that was the recommendation that they voted on? And if the, there are several Board of Finance members that said differently.
It's immaterial what the Board of Finance voted, for me, it's immaterial what the Board of Finance voted on. This plan just doesn't make any sense.
Right, and they, right.
Wouldn't support it, even if they did vote for it.
And they asked us to come back to the Town Council and to the Board of Ed and weigh in on it. So, Murphy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, okay, so my take on what the town manager sent in this email is that it didn't give us any more information than we had when we deferred on this last week. He hasn't told us anything new. Because the problem, the basic problem is, is that the healthcare money is not on our books. It's on the town's books, but it is not on our books. So we don't have access to the data regarding healthcare. So the question we asked, we asked two questions, actually. One was, okay, so how much surplus is attributable to revenues from the Board of Education minus expenses charged to Board of Education employees and retirees? And out of that, how much is money that was contributed by the retirees and employees to pay for healthcare and not for anything other than healthcare? My position is that about 22% of the money that we collect to go into the healthcare fund is not ours to spend any way we want to. It belongs to the employees and retirees who put it in there to pay for healthcare. So until that's accounted for, there's nothing really, we can really say about the healthcare. Now that town's got to make the books balance, and they're entitled to do that any way they want to, and if they can use money that would otherwise end up in the healthcare fund and reduce the healthcare fund to some smaller number than it would otherwise be, it's on their books. They can do that. That's, the same is true of the Workers' Compensation Fund. It's not on our books, it's on their books. They can do whatever they want there, and we don't really have, it's interesting that the allegation is that the books have been balanced for the last several years by reducing the healthcare fund, and that allegedly the Board of Ed somehow did that. But the Board of Ed has never been asked, the Board of Ed does not have access to those accounts, it's never been on our books.
So are you suggesting, Murphy, that this is something that the Board of Ed should not act upon and just defer to the town and the Board of Finance to figure out how to close the books?
I think we should ask, we should tell the Board of Ed, the town, that they are free to do whatever they need to do to make the books balance, that our main concern is that monies contributed by employees and retirees not be used for anything other than healthcare.
Mary, you had your hand up?
Yes, um, you know, I do want to try and grasp this problem. So, you know, I, one thing, though, that I want to mention is that I don't know how it accords with statutory requirements and bylaws. Because once again, I believe this is in the bylaws of the town, Section 10, subsection 8, then G, you know, about transferring funds. And it says, "Upon request transmitted by the town manager and approved by the Town Council, the town of Wyndham may transfer any unexpended or unencumbered appropriation, balance, or proportion thereof from one board, office, or agency except the Board of Education." That is because we are a different agency. Now, I don't know if I understand all of the legal questions, but I would say, why, you know, I also think it's inappropriate that we can't see what our health fund and our workers' comp is, because again, those are board funds and monies. So, you know, I feel that we cannot really operate as an agency of the state, which we are, in this atmosphere here, in this environment. And I believe that the spirit, and again, I'm not a legal person, but the spirit of the state's statute there, when it, when it says that the town has to close its books, I don't think, and coupled with this, they can't reach into the board money and do it. They, they do need to close the books, but, you know, if they have to do it some other way, the fund balance, I'm not in favor of that. I believe they don't appropriate enough, but that's my problem.
Mary, just to, just to, just to be clear, the first issue that, well, after you read the bylaws, the section that you referred to, that one of the issues that you raised was, how can we, as a Board of Ed, not have direct knowledge and information and ability to act regarding funds that are, that are the Board of Ed's? And I think if you look at the document that we approved last week at our meeting regarding the response to the forensic analysis, I mean, I believe that's one of our goals, is to get that resolved and change that permanently moving forward and in writing. And if you read that document clearly, it states several ways in which that will begin to happen, but it is a process. So, right now, the Board of Finance is asking the Board of Ed and the Town Council if they want, if they would act on this proposal. We have an option of saying, no, you guys figure it out, or we have an option of making some other suggestion, or we have an option of not taking action. But right now, we don't have the ability to make, to move those funds around right now.
May I?
Yes.
I just want to say something, that, like, Lucia, you're totally clear, totally right on this. I think my interpretation of the meeting last week was, my interpretation of the meeting last week was that the Board of Finance is asking the Board of Education and the Town Council as a courtesy to go and consider this. Those accounts are not, we might contribute funds to those accounts, but those, Dr. Murphy said, are town's accounts. They are strictly town's account. And because they're strictly town's account, we don't get the ability to see those accounts. I think one of the things that a forensic audit did that I think is very good, it said one of the things that the Board of Education needs to do is to request the separations of those finances. And that is something that I urge every board member to do, put your effort in separating those accounts. I think it's frustrating for everyone, for you board members, and for the superintendent and my team, to contribute to an account where we don't know where it goes. I think the town has the ability legally, you may disagree, to move those funds and to do whatever they want to do. We might politely say to them, we disagree with you, we don't want to do this, but ultimately, the workers' comp, the pension, the health insurance are their account, it's on their books. We don't get to see, we don't get to operate it, we don't get to change it, we don't get to do anything with those. As superintendent, I have to say that one of the things I think would be the most important thing for this board to do is to separate those accounts. That way, you as the board, and whoever run the school district superintendent, can't have access to those money, and we know what they are.
And even if we decided to do that, which I think many people on this board would like to do, it's not going to happen overnight.
Overnight.
So.
It's not going to happen.
So, so Ilda had her hand up, then Murphy?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay, Murphy?
Maybe I was itchy.
In fairness to the process here, right, there are two things that need to be thought about. First is, what, 2012, the town decided to combine Boards of Finance, to create a combined town finance department, you know? And that's a good idea conceptually, but I don't know, I mean, it was complicated, it still is complicated. And I'm not so sure that at the time, everybody thought through all the implications, and we are seeing today, that some of the things that got overlooked, or that people didn't appreciate the complexities that were going to arise from doing it a different way, haven't been, haven't been covered, and now they're coming back to kind of confuse things. Second thing is, we also went with, in 2012, with a so-called self-funded health insurance, even though there is an insurance policy, I mean, we have a.
We don't need to get into the details of it.
Yeah, okay.
Just sweat that way.
It's not as dangerous as it sounds, but, but, but it's a, it is a policy that covers both the boards and the town's employees.
Right.
Okay, so it's a, it's kind of a group thing. And so, it's a group thing, so it was put in one account without, and the bills, of course, when they come in, you know whether or not it was a town employee or a Board of Education employee that generated the claim, and the claim gets put onto the board's side or the town's side. But the revenues are a little murkier, because all the revenues don't come out of our general fund. Some of the revenues come from retirees, some of the revenues come from employees' cost sharing, and some of the revenues presumably come from grants. Although, how much is actually accounted for from grants is a whole other complex issue that hasn't been completely sorted out. And so then there's a question of, once the money is put over on the town's side, if the bills are charged against the Board of Education's general fund, is it recognized that some of this other money should be, be used to pay for some of those bills? And that's where there can be an appearance of a deficit in the Board of Ed's accounts and a surplus in the town's accounts that isn't real.
Real.
It's, it's not a result of the Board of Ed overspending, it's a result of bookkeeping decisions that didn't properly account for monies or revenues that should have been credited back to the Board of Ed. And that could have been going on for the last four years. The, all right, and the other thing that it turns out is that if you want to know how much money is in the healthcare reserve fund, there is no actual reserve fund. There's one balance sheet account for healthcare. Money goes into the account. We put money in, the town puts money in, the employees put money in, the retirees put money in, grants put money in, I don't know, the water company puts money in, there's a lot of money that goes in, right? And bills get paid out of that account. At the end of the fiscal year, the town closes the books, quote unquote, as of the 30th of June. They add everything up. And whatever's left over in that account is the reserve fund. So the reserve fund is actually a known number once a year when the books are closed. And that number has declined over the last four years. Why has that number declined over the last four years? Well, apparently, because money had to be used to cover deficits. Whether they were town deficits or Board of Education deficits, doesn't make any difference. It's all the same taxpayers. It's, you know, it's, it's whether the money's in the left pocket or the right pocket. But the money got spent paying off deficits. And as to Mark's question about how do you get a negative number, well, what does it mean if there's a negative balance in that account? It's not, there is no such thing as minus money. Where that $900,000 that's hiding is in the quote, "uncommitted fund reserve." It basically means that $900,000 of the fund reserve at the time was actually committed to the healthcare account, if you will, or, you know. But now we've, you know, this year, we've brought back in a lot more money, that the healthcare fund is healthier.
So is that a yes or no on the plan, Mur?
On what?
On the plan.
On the plan.
Just where is this leading? What are you trying to say to us?
So what I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, is that, all right, so I'm still, my main concern, I agree with the superintendents, you know, the town can do whatever the town wants to do, it's on their books, it's their account.
Right.
Except for accounting for the money that was paid in by employees and retirees. That's not our money to decide what to do with, nor is it the town's money to decide what to do with. That money has to be spent on healthcare. And if there's any money left over from healthcare, whatever fraction of the money they contributed has got to be left over.
No, I haven't.
So I, oh, okay, because I'm going to put the question on the table again after, because I don't really think, we can go round and round and round, but there are a couple ways we can respond today.
Ilda? You could put the question out first.
No, go ahead, no, no, go ahead with your question.
All right, so, I for one, I'm not comfortable voting for taking money out of anything right now and putting it somewhere else, not knowing where, where all this money is. I just, you know, we need to be transparent. I wish we could just separate the money today, I really do. I mean, that's probably the only way we would all be comfortable voting tonight. So my question is now, if we don't do anything, if we don't take action tonight, does this hold up Ms. Rita closing the books?
Nope.
No? Okay, then I vote no.
Well, we're not voting. Okay? You're saying you don't even have a motion on the floor. Tracy?
I have three concerns. One, that this is exactly what the Board of Ed was accused of doing, which led to the audit or assessment that we had, and now the town's saying, you guys shouldn't do that, but let's do it just for, just one more time to cover what we need.
Let's do it together.
Two, this is not a munis report.
No.
Right.
So this might be good enough for someone else that forwarded this to us, but after being accused of what we've been accused of, and after the investigation that we did, being told that we weren't seeing munis reports, means that we should see a munis report before we should take any action. We do have culpability in this, I mean, we overspent our budget.
No, no, no. No, no. Okay, let Tracy finish.
Now I finish, I listen to everybody else.
Tracy, finish.
I sat quietly with my hand up. We overspent our budget in some way, share or perform, do I think we were underfunded? Yes. Whole different issue, whole different bag of beans to open up later on, but we've overspent our budget, and so we need to be a partner in finding this. I'm voting no, because this is an munis spreadsheet. Grant money that's supposed to go to healthcare should go to healthcare, and if whoever gave us the grant finds out we're using it to cover deficits that might not be covered by the grant, we could lose the grants. And that would be a huge loss, especially after Dr. Garcia's weekly update last week that said most of the English teacher positions at the high school, most of the ELA positions, have been moved into grants. That's scary for me, I've always been against moving positions into grants, Dr. Garcia, you know that, it's not an attack, it's not anything else. The more we put in grants, when the grants go away, the more we have to lose. So that's horrific to me. So the grant money could go away, because we're not spending it as the grant entitles it. And third, we are lying to the teachers, the retirees, and the grant people if we are telling them the money's going into the healthcare, and then we are taking it and putting it somewhere else. We're lying to them. We're not giving them any say in this, and we're not being, well, we're being transparent by talking about it now, but we're not being transparent by just moving it. So I'm a no vote on this.
Ms. Lambert, could you make sure everyone knows that this is not a report that came from the Board of Education?
Yes.
This is a report that came from the town?
Yes.
I made it clear when I handed it out, it was, it was what we got from the town manager.
I didn't want to, to pick on anyone in particular, but it wasn't a munis report, which is one of the things in the assessment that was pointed out to us. So if we accept another non-munis report as fact, we're just continuing to go down the same path that we were on before.
From the spreadsheet, right? It's very good points.
So I'd like to put on the table again, we have a couple ways we could respond this evening. We could make a motion to, to approve the proposal that was, I mean, to approve the proposal that was sent to us by the Board of Finance. We could make a motion to respond to the Board of Finance by saying, we don't think this is the, the appropriate way to, to close the deficit, and we urge you to go back and figure out another way to do that without dipping into the health insurance fund, for example, or whatever we want to say, or, or we could make a motion to propose something else. Or we could make a motion to take, or we could just take no action at all. So, but, but we do need to move on. I mean, we can't just talk about this ad nauseam, no matter how unhappy we might be with the state of things, and how we wish that we could, we could remove, I mean, we could separate our funds right now and know the answers to all these questions on our own, but we, we don't have that ability right now. Mark?
Well, again, agreeing with Dr. Garcia and, and, and Dr. Sol, they can close the budget any way they want, that's their option. The motion, I would, I would put on the floor, a motion that the Board of Ed does not support the plan as proposed from the town manager, whoever is the source of this. And I, that's it, my motion would be that we vote not to support this plan.
With no, with no caveats in it.
Robert's Rules of Order says a motion is supposed to be in the affirmative.
Okay.
So we can't not, we can move to accept it and then vote against it, which is saying the same thing, but Robert's Rules of Order say that a motion should be in the affirmative and then be voted against.
So the motion could be to, to, to.
To accept it as presented, and then we just vote against it.
Or, but that's not sending a message to them necessarily, that you might want to send.
No.
No.
No. Yes, Mike?
I make a motion, we accept it, accept it as written. Put a motion on the floor that we accept it as written.
No, oh, he didn't get a second, the way he.
I seconded it. Ilda seconded it.
Oh, yeah, so there's a motion on the floor, but if we can't put a motion on the floor.
Well, it's.
That way, then we've got to accept it and then vote it down.
Just another reason why I hate Robert's Rules.
Sorry.
Um, no, I, I just think, I just think it's ridiculous.
I'll vote yes on Mark's motion, but she's right, you can't, you can't put it that way.
But can't there be a way it can be worded that it's not a, a negative statement?
Yeah.
Like, our affirmative motion that we suggest the Board of, the Board of Finance go back and figure out a different way to do it?
That would be a different motion.
I know.
Okay, so I, I would move that.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
I retract my motion.
I knew we had two.
Yeah, there was no second.
Can you amend your motion to?
I'll retract the motion for discussion. I'll retract it.
Is that okay with you, Ilda?
No.
Not to retract it?
Yeah, it's okay.
Take it off the floor so we can figure out the right wording? That's all we're asking.
Yes, that's okay.
Okay. So does somebody have a suggestion?
No.
I would like to move that we, that we, that we recommend that the town close the budget with any funds available other than those contributed by Board of Education employees or retirees.
I'll second that motion for purpose of discussion, if nothing else.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's basically saying to the board, do what you need to do to close the budget gap, but don't touch any money that's contributed by Board of Ed employees.
Or retirees.
Or retirees.
Or grants, all, all.
Employees, grants, or retirees.
Okay.
My big concern was just putting the grants at jeopardy if somebody finds out that we spent them in a way that wasn't.
Yep, no, that's, that's valid.
So that motion is on the floor, discussion. Mary?
You know, I just want to stick with the point that we, the town can't decide what to do with Board of Education money, even if we isolate just this, what's contributed to health and workers' comp. And I, I also want to say, although we put together steps last week, I'm saying, the law, if I, if I understand it correctly, it doesn't matter if we've been doing it against the law or not in the spirit of law all this time, and we should do it one more ti, I'm saying.
Well, we're not saying we're going to do it, Mary, on this, with this motion that's on the floor.
Right, but I just want to say, I'm not going to wait till we enact a bunch of things when, when this already is on the books. We should just follow, and the town also should just follow. We should just follow, and the town also should just follow what is required by law in terms of respecting the autonomy of the Board of Education funds.
I don't think anybody would disagree with you on that.
The, we filed, the, the deadline was today to file a statement with the state on the state of our books. And we filed a statement that said that we are in deficit by a little over eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and that the town will cover the deficit, which is the town is obligated to do by law. Okay? And when you get to that point, the town looks into an accountant and says, here's an account of unexpended money.
Well, they look at whatever they want to look at.
Yes, the town is entitled to use whatever funds are available to, so if we were not filing a report that said we were in deficit, we could make the case that you're making, but since we're in deficit, it's kind of hard to really stand up there and make that argument, that they can't spend our money because we have a debt to pay.
But we have a motion on the table that's asking them to do it without spending our money.
Well, without spending money from employees and retirees.
Right.
That's, that's not the same thing.
And grants.
And grants, which also is not the same thing.
Mike.
So, am I understanding that correctly, that no matter which way we vote, they, they still have the authority to take whatever monies they want to take regardless of how our motions go tonight?
One could say ultimately, although we are, we are putting some parameters around what we'd like them to hold harmless, but, with this motion.
Basically, they could spend the money, I mean, we don't, it's, it's town money. All of this is on town books, so as far as they're concerned, they're spending town money. They don't really need our approval, I think it was a courtesy.
Right.
And, and I think it was trying to, to make things work until we figure out what our new practices are gonna be. And, and I understand that part of it, but we also have to protect those things that are ours, and those funds that are ours. And so I think we're saying, you do what you gotta do, but this is our opinion on it. Either way, we couldn't stop them until things are back on our books where they belong, which is our order for this month in October. Lynn set some pretty strict guidelines for that.
So, so basically, our, our best course of action is to vote against them and, and put it out there that we're against using this. They're gonna use it anyway, but, you know, just put it out there that, that we're against using the funds for that purpose.
They might decide to go into some different funds, who knows, we'll see. But, anyway, that's, it's their choice.
I, I hate to split hairs over this, but I'm not quite sure I understand the difference between a motion that says we don't support this method of doing the money is being negative, and a motion that says you can't spend, don't spend my money is not being negative. It's, they both seem to be the same thing to me, I'm not sure if we...
Now, my motion was to allow them to spend the money other than the money that we're really not allowed to let them spend.
So yours was putting parameters on it, in my opinion, and yours was just saying, no, we don't agree with this.
I...
We're still gonna vote the same way.
I, I, I would go with the more clear, no, we don't agree with this, but I, I can't find access to the Roberts that makes it...
Unless, unless you have a way of getting around Robert's Rules of Order. We can't do it.
Robert gonna call me up and tell me I can't lift this motion?
You'd be, you'd be my good friend if you thought that Robert's Rules of Order should not always be obeyed, but, but I'm, I'm going by the will of the board right now, and so we have a motion that's on the floor, it's been seconded, it's been discussion, discussed, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask some.
Yes, Jaime.
What could be the consequences of this? I mean, could we enter on a hard Brexit?
No deal.
I mean, what could happen, what, just think about, I mean, I think the motion is good, and I'm gonna say yes, but what could be the consequences of it?
It's hard.
Could be entered into some sort of a...
A hard Brexit.
Problem with town?
We may be in a hard Brexit with the town, no matter, no matter what we do, Jaime. I think that it's hard to speculate about what could happen. We could go into the Board of Finance public hearing tomorrow night, and people might have hard feelings about us being perhaps perceived as being ungrateful for their olive branch, I don't know. But I think people should vote their conscience, and vote what they think is right to do as a member of the Board of Ed, and for the Board of Ed, and the students and staff and system that we serve.
One more.
Yes.
Okay, can we request somehow that they do send this in the format from units? From what they're doing, it was a big part of the, of the report.
Right, right.
I mean, it took...
Well, we're not, we're not taking, I mean, I think if...
Somehow lay it on or suggest or something?
I think, I think if you, if you, if you take the document that we approved last week to its logical conclusion, at some point, we will have an accounting of those, of those numbers in, in a proper format. Any, anything else? Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor? Are, are, what, is your, are you a yes? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And I should have asked any abstentions, I think everybody voted though, okay.
I think I did. I, I, I'm so confused, I guess I voted for the motion, because it's not, it's to not do this.
So can we, who voted for the motion, put your hands up one more time? Was Mark, Tracy, Murphy, Jaime?
Who voted for the motion, yes.
Yeah, Jaime, Suzie, Mike. Who voted against it? Mary and Ilda.
So we voted for the motion that's, so it's against this.
Right.
Saying we...
That we do not accept what they want to do.
Lynn, maybe as Chair of the Board of Ed going forward, if I may speak out, we only accept financial statements that are munis-based.
I think that's a good...
From the town manager, from Rita, from our own people, from anyone. We only accept financial reports that are munis-based.
I see a lot of nodding heads, we can, we can certainly do that.
And that just protects us all around now, we don't get anything that's...
Tables in there, it is, it explains the...
Hobbled together, or incorrect, or misinformation, and it needs to be munis-based.
Even if there's a narrative that breaks it down a different way, but we have to have that chart there.
But as a Chair, when you're communicating to the Board of Finance Chair, the Town Manager, the Town Council, the only thing we will accept from here on out, in, in deference to the, the assessment that we had done, is munis-based reports.
That's right.
I think that's a great idea.
One of the books, I agree with that.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's just an opinion.
Thank you. And kick, and kick me if I forget, okay? Okay, so we're on to, first of all, I want to welcome Suzie and Jaime, glad you could join us this evening.
Oh, hi.
Jaime, it's good to see you up and about. The second item is discussion and possible action on the 2019-2020 budget in preparation for September 4th Board of Finance public hearing. There's a public hearing tomorrow at 6:00 PM before the Board of Finance. They're going to be hearing from the public, and then they could take action to just keep the budget as is, or make adjustments to the budget, and so last week, we began a discussion about what we might want to be saying tomorrow night at that meeting. And I really do need your guidance, or if you don't think it's me who should be saying something, we should have a plan about who is saying something. If you don't think Dr. Garcia and I should go up, who else should go up, and how do we want to present things to the board? Now, I know Mary has put on the table that we should just say that we don't want to accept what the Board of Finance is doing, and, and if we didn't have a, a town charter that actually gave them the right to have a say over our budget, and also give the, this is going to the voters, something has to be voted on by the voters, and they are the ones in the town charter that have the right to, to put that bottom line number there. If we don't agree with that, we can say that, but we have to accept what the voters vote on. So is there any discussion that people would like to start? Dr. Garcia, is there anything you want to start?
Well, I just want to say that I want the board to be aware, since the original budget was presented, we have made three reductions to the budget in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine, seven hundred and ninety-six.
This was sent to us all on Friday in the board packet.
Three reductions have been made in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-four. That's a large amount in, in a budget of this size. And so as you can see, we, in the first reduction, we maintain all position, and we moved some position to grant. In the second reduction, we also tried to maintain all the position and moved some position to grant. Of course, again, knowing that the grants have some guidelines, and that we cannot put all position into grant. After cut, reduction number three, there is no way that I can move, that the district can move any other position to grant. If we move any other position to grant, then we will be able, we will be losing the grant, I would be, not be able to go by the guidelines of the grant. And in addition to that, as you can see, we are cutting position, administrative position in reduction number three. So if there is another reduction, they definitely will be cutting programs, cutting staff, because at this particular time, we are cutting administrative position. I have not cut teaching position, we not reduced teaching position or staff position, but administrative position have been reduced. And I do want to say that, that administrative position have been reduced, create an area of concern for all administrators that need to pick up different areas of responsibility. So an impact of a reduction of one million, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars is a large amount in this budget, without reducing staff and programs.
Murphy.
So I, one question that I asked when I saw this, and that is, well, if you say, for example, that eliminating the school resource officer, seventy thousand dollars, does that include fringes as well as direct compensation?
Yeah, that, yes.
So, so when you're talking about the amounts of money here, you're talking that the total cost of, of these positions?
For that position, yes.
Even the ones you moved to grants, we're talking about total cost, that includes benefits?
Yes.
Because the one thing that I don't want to have happen is us counting on saving money that forgot that we still have benefits hanging out there.
No, 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 we did. And, and I do want to say that I did put that position, because that position has not been filled at this particular time, and that's the only reason. So I tried to put position that have not been filled. However, the administrative position is a position that we had someone in, in that position, and we will not be replacing.
That officer is a member of the Willimantic Police Force, correct?
Yes. But we have put another resource officer in the budget, so the middle school could have one, and the high school could have one.
So...
So they're continuing to share instead of each getting their own?
Right, okay. What, half between, half, so it, regardless of what's on this page, there would be halftime in the middle.
The school and half, yes. The ideal situation would be for the middle school to have their own, and the high school to have their own.
Mark, you had your hand up.
Well, I guess, having done this for many years, I've never, I've never supported going to the Board of Finance with a list of cuts, only because it always turns out to bite you in the rear end. Because no matter what you put up, no matter what we put on the table to cut, it's either a threat, you did that only because you want a threat, because you're not gonna do, you're not gonna make those cuts, or it becomes a bone of contention, you know, we're not gonna support the budget because you're cutting X, Y, and Z. I've never seen it work to our favor, they ask for it every year, Board of Ed produces it every year, I've just never seen it work to our, to our advantage to do this. That's a general statement. I, I really, I have real concerns with cutting the middle school resource officer, considering all the problems that we've been hearing from the middle school, considering last year's Facebook events out of the middle school, I, I have a real concern about cutting that. I wouldn't, I would not support cutting the, the resource officer at the middle school. And just, just a clarification, Dr. Garcia, the elimination of the assistant superintendent, now the budget book says we have nine, so are you telling me now we'll have eight administration?
We don't have nine assistant superintendent in the budget book.
Or nine administrative people. The, the budget book says there are nine.
You will have, you will have eight, so they reduce in one, right.
So we reduce from the nine in the, in the budget book to eight, that's what I'm asking.
And so let me go back to the resource officer at the middle school, I, I do agree with you, I think there's a need at the middle school to, to do that, to have that person, and that's the reason why I put it in the budget. However, this particular time, you know, we can't put more people in grant, I don't have general funds. If we can locate another funding source, then I'd be happy to, and since this person is not in place yet, that's the reason why. But I do agree with you that this information is for you, I don't think this information is for the Board of Finance. I, I think they already told us how much they're cutting out by three hundred, the last cut, by three twenty-seven, the second cut, by seven hundred and twenty-seven, the first reduction, I don't think this is for them, this is information for you, since this is what you requested, that you wanted to know where it's coming from.
Right, part of what the discussion is tonight is what we want to present, or what face we want to present at the Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night. Tracy?
A couple of things. Way back when, when we were initially doing our, our wonderful budget at the beginning of this whole process, the middle school SGC came and asked for a school psychologist, has that been added to their budget?
No, a social worker.
A social worker, I'm sorry, I haven't seen that in any of the cuts, but I've also been told by someone on the SGC that as far as they know, it hasn't arrived in the school.
Well, it hasn't arrived because the budget has been passed, so it's, it's in the, is in this budget. And I, and I did, I didn't put it, but, but I'm gonna get it from another grant, that I'm requesting another grant, I put in another grant.
Um, we are...
So you're, just, just can I pause you? So you're saying, you're saying that if, if and when the budget passes, you will fill that position.
Exactly, because it's not in last year's budget, it's in the nineteen-twenty budget.
Right, I understand that, it's in, it's in this year's budget, I understand that. I'm highly concerned that we don't have the resource officer at the middle school, I understand it's being shared as, as it was before, and we don't have an ISS person, and two vice principals...
The ISS person they hired today.
There was only one interview.
They hired somebody, they recommended somebody.
They hired somebody for a different position today, the person interviewed for a...
Did ISS, did hire the ISS person today, do you know? Maybe you know more than me, I don't know, but I know they were interviewing for that.
The middle school is trying very hard to make forward steps, and they're starting off very positive, but they're really concerned about the vacancies that are there.
But let me, but let me be clear, those vacancy have never, are not cut, are not being reduced, I want to make clear. And they're interviewing, so I want to make sure, I don't know who's giving you that information from the middle school, but Mr. Doctor Ware had interviewed for the ISS, and also interviewed for the Compañeros position. So I don't know if he made a recommendation today, I know he interviewed for those.
Okay, so, and then we're moving more than half of the high school ELA teachers into grant. I understand, one orange, only so many pieces, I get it. But moving more than half of our high school English teachers, just that one department even, into grants, when these grants go away, devastates our English department, and I, I have not spoken to any English teachers before that accusation comes up, I have read it off of what you have sent us, devastates that department, and then in two or three years, when somebody starts saying that our SAT scores and our PSAT scores are in the toilet, this is the reason for it, and I'm not blaming you, Dr. Garcia, in the least, I'm just making it clear. When our scores go down in ELA in composition, and our math scores, math scores may stay good or something else, this is the reason, it's these kind of cuts that don't enable our students to get what they need.
So, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I have one more thing. When we first approved ECHO, it was no cost to the district, everything was gonna be supplied. Now I'm seeing we're cutting, we're moving an ELA ECHO teacher fifty percent board, fifty percent Commissioners Network. Commissioners Network was never supposed to support the ECHO program. ECHO's a program, program, supposed to be outside sources and self-sustaining. That is not happening here. That program is under-enrolled from what it was initially supposed to be. Eleven students graduated last year, according to Dr. Garcia, all of them.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, eleven of them have gotten positions at EB, General Dynamics?
Eleven.
Where, where did they get jobs?
Eleven, two of them went to college for institutions, eleven, two went to the military. Eleven is at EB, and one is somewhere else.
Okay, so eleven graduated, not with associate's degrees, just with high school diplomas. Some of them got jobs, some of them chose other paths, but we are supposed to be at a cohort of fifty per year by now, and we're not.
So, so let me answer to...
Let Dr. Garcia respond.
So I, I tend to disagree with your statement, I think there's lots of information there that is incorrect, so let me clarify then, for one. We are not under-enrolled. We decided to, to reduce the number enrollment, because exactly what you said, the more students we have, we need to have more classes. So we're not under-enrolled, we decided to bring twenty-five per year instead of going fifty per year, that was a decision that the administration made. Number two, definitely the program costs when they have to get out, leave, and go and take all the specialized courses, community college. However, these students are our students, so if they were taking English, the English that they're taking is ECHO English, it's not an ECHO English, it's regular English. So, if they were taking English, the English that they're taking is ECHO English, it's not an ECHO English, it's regular English. So, you're right, what we have done, in order for the program not to cost us money, is to make sure that the students can take all their courses here, and they do take some college courses, and those college courses come through what we know as the Perkins Grants, or another name, through the community college, for the community college. So, I tend to disagree with you, I think, I will invite you to come to my office, I'll need you to bring the information. The students are our students, they're taking math and English, in ECHO or not ECHO, they have to have a teacher, okay? So, then, ECHO program, and they're taking math and English, and the courses that they're taking out of the normal curriculum, that will be the community college courses, come through the community college Perkins Grant.
So, they're using their Perkins Grant money?
To do that.
We're requiring our students to use their Perkins Grant money, that is a limited amount?
It's called, is the community college money for this type of program? And I don't know the exact name, I will get the exact name from, is the community college money for these type of programs?
And we have an administrator for this program?
We, I will say we have a coordinator, a teacher that teaches part-time, three courses, and coordinate the program the other two.
Okay, so that teacher has a salary?
Yeah.
Where's that money coming from?
Well, she's a teacher, come from our, part of it come from the, from the general fund and part of it come from one of the grants.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's coming from our, I'm just saying, this all starts to add up, and a specialty program that helps a limited number of our students is something that we seriously need to take a look at.
I want to disagree with you again.
You've limited it to twenty-five students per year.
And let me say to you, our mission is to educate all kids, college and career ready. If you're making that argument that this program limited students, then let's look at the AP program and let's make the same argument. Because when I have, when we have a class of AP student with eight kids or nine kids, and you pay another, one full teacher for that, then that's another argument. I will say to you is, this program benefit kids, and that's why we are here, and it benefit the kids that need it the most, okay? So, let's look at the kids that go to UConn, and let's look at all the AP courses that we offer. Moreover, there was a presentation by Mr. Neil Weathers that showed, showed the board that AP was not most beneficial for a student in this, in this program. That the most beneficial program in, for students was dual enrollment, either community college, either UConn, or either Eastern, that those were the ones that's most beneficial. This is a dual enrollment program, where are they taking the courses? I'd be happy to sit down with you in my office or bring it back to the board. But these students are not, if we continue to the two-year program, it would cost us more money. And that's one of the reasons we decided that the kids can come out with their certificate and get a job with Electric Boat and start working. You are correct in that. But I'd be happy to share that information again with you, any board member. I just want to remind the board member why we're here, what is the mission of this school district, and where our support should go, to our student, to get them college and career readiness. And if we want to compare ECHO, then I think it's fair game to compare AP and to compare all the other dual, dual courses that we are.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't argue that at all, however, I do think that, one, the board approved this program in the first place. The board did not approve limiting the number of students to allow into any of these programs. The board did not approve limiting or not any amount of students that go into AP or ECE. The board is unable to limit students going to EO or Parrish Hill or any other, well, we don't have Parrish Hill, EO or any other school, Tech or anything like that. I don't think that we should be limiting programs, but we have to look at the outcomes and the feasibility. The board did not approve, not, I mean, initially, the students were supposed to stay with us for six years to get their associate's degrees while they were here. The board did not approve graduating them with certificates last year.
Okay.
Let me, I need to answer, I do need to answer that. The students went to an internship at Electric Boat during the eleventh grade, whatever, they went to an internship. They came back, and this was their choice. They wanted to finish earlier, because once they went to the internship with Electric Boat, they already had a job waiting for them. And I think that's their choice, they said, "Look, we can finish, go and get a job at Electric Boat, and we can finish our program." The coordinator of this program is in contact, communication with the community college for how these students are supposed to finish their program. So, these students have not been abandoned, but they went to an internship, came back and said, "Look, this is what we want to do." And so, the coordinator worked with QBCC to make sure that they can finish at QBCC, and those courses will be paid by Electric Boat.
Folks, I'm going to step in here, because if we want, I do think the board needs time to...
Add this to the agenda for the retreat, please?
Yes. I just, I just think that we're not going to discuss programs in full-blown discussion here, right?
I'm respectfully requesting we add this to the retreat agenda then.
And I will say one more time about the retreat agenda. People have asked to discuss programs, and I need specific programs that you want to have discussed. ECHO will be one of them, but I need to hear from folks in the next day or so, if there are other specific programs that you would like to discuss at the board retreat. So, back to this, to the matter at hand, can you just hold on a second, please, Murphy? Back to the matter at hand, we need to decide how we want to approach the hearing tomorrow. We don't need to present a specific list of cuts. Some people requested what that would look like, some board members requested what that was, would look like, potentially. I would put forward that the board doesn't need to make any decision about, final decision in consultation with the administration about cuts until we have a real budget to deal with, and then at such time, we can make, make a decision about those cuts. Clearly, there are people on this board who have concerns with budget cut number three, some of those cuts, and concerns with moving things over to grants. But we do need to, we, we don't need to make that final decision tonight, this is just something that was put forward to us.
And my point is that...
Oh, Mary had her hand up before you, Murphy.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I do just want to say, I think these cuts to the high school are extremely concerning, and it does seem that they get a very hard hit with this series of cuts you have forecast.
So, if we have to take one point three million dollars out of the budget, it's not going to be a pretty picture. We're not going to be happy. There is no happy answer to one point three million dollars down, okay? What I look at this as, I'm sort of in-between on where Mark is, because on the one hand, yeah, I don't want it to sound like a threat, if you don't give us the money, we're going to slash this, right? Or, you know, this is what's going to happen if you don't, you know, because that's, and then if you don't do it, then they say, "Well, why did you do that?" What I'm saying is that, but on the other hand, to not say nothing except, "Oh, my goodness, how are we going to find a million, three hundred thousand when we have contractual raises of three percent and healthcare going up by five or six percent," right? If our costs are going up three percent more and the budget's going to go up one point three percent, how do you make that work? I mean, that's one kind of argument that, as, as Dr. Phillips said to the Board of Finance, "We have a community problem here, this cannot work." All right, we know that, but we have a list of things here that, that we can show them, okay? This is what, what kind of a knock-down, drag-out battle we're going to have to have. I'm not saying we're going to cut any of these things or move, make any of these moves. I'm going to say, we're going to have to seriously consider doing this, or stuff that's just as ugly as this. Or it's just as, you know, if we do something different from this, somebody's going to squawk, there's a problem with that. Even, all right, I understand this point about moving stuff to grants. The Alliance Grants are not going away. In fact, they're going to get bigger. The legislature's already scheduled raising them, whether they'll keep to the schedule, because it's a ten-year schedule, and the legislature makes decisions at two-year intervals, so whether they keep to that schedule or not is up in the air, but it's not going to disappear. The Commissioners Network, on the other hand, we've had, we've been through this game before, we know that vanishes.
Will disappear.
And so, and so, if you put something on Commissioners Network, you've essentially kicked that can down the road in hopes that maybe you can convince the voters next year to cover the cost that you need to cover. But in the meantime, we got to find a million, three hundred thousand, and we don't want to lay off teachers, and I'm really not, you know, even if you say, "Well, we're not going to lay off teachers," and you cut other things, it affects the classroom.
Well...
Right? There's no way you can reduce by one point three million dollars and not have it hurt. So, we need to make sure that the Board of, that the, not only the Board of Finance, because their problem is, what can we get the voters to pass? So, ultimately, we have to convince the voters that you just can't keep doing this, it's not going to work for this town.
Anybody else want to comment? So, tomorrow, again, I'm hearing that people would prefer not to give a list of cuts, although Murphy just made the case, I think the minority, you could say, well, you don't have to give them any piece of paper, you don't have to list specific cuts, you could just say, there's no way, if you cut, that it's not going to touch the classroom at this point. Because we still haven't figured out how we're going to deal with the bus contract, for example.
Well, and if you look at cut number three down here, if, if you reduce the number of assistant superintendents and resource officers, you potentially raise the risk of disciplinary problems in the schools.
Well, that's why I'm saying it touches the classroom.
Which are going to touch the classroom indirectly by creating distractions and other problems that teachers have to somehow live with. There's no way you can win on this.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Sad.
Yes, Mark.
In terms of the presentation, if you're looking for a recommendation, I guess my recommendation would be that you give the presentation, that we don't offer up Dr. Garcia or Murphy or anyone else, that it be a one-person focus, because we don't have answers to specific questions they might ask in terms of, you know, you can certainly, I would think, you have to offer them something, you have to mention that, you know, we're reducing administrative staff and we're looking at other things to, in order to balance the budget. And then, you know, plead the case as to it, you know, these cuts will affect the classroom in some way, we just haven't figured out how. Because, and you point out, we have the bus increase, we have the salary increase, and...
That healthcare increase.
We're looking at, we're looking at everything, I think, that's the way to, in my opinion, that would be the way to go, is that we just have you as the, as a lone spokesperson, if you will, and not anyone else at the table with you, and just see, you know, the question's going to, we have to anticipate the questions are going to come as, well, how are you going to pay back the health insurance? How are you going to do this, what are you going to do about, you know, they're going to be very specific in asking you for things that you may not be ready to answer yet.
Well, what do other people think of that suggestion?
I think you should be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think you definitely should be the spokesperson, but not by yourself, though, because once they start, you should, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? Then, you shouldn't be alone. Then, maybe you would need Dr. Garcia, since she knows specifics, either her or Rita, Ms. Rita.
Well, any other thoughts? Mike?
One person, we, the biggest talk, I mean, it gets too complicated, you get too many people, you get too many answers, you get too many questions, one person, go with what you're, you're prepared to say, and that's it. You can't turn it into a back and forth, and you definitely can't start parading a bunch of people up there, asking a million questions and answering a million questions, because no matter what you say, it's going to be turned against, it's going to be turned into something else.
Well, this is a public hearing, so, you know, ostensibly, they're going to hear testimony from whomever shows up to give testimony. So, I would be getting up there and giving testimony, and sort of sticking to the talking points that I've heard that are very general, and, and saying that the board will go back to the drawing board when a budget passes and confer with the superintendent and the administration about how to do, to make these cuts, I mean, to make any cuts that may need to be made. I could also make the case that they could rescind this latest cut and put forward to the voters a budget closer to what they voted down in June. Just that, I mean, I don't know what people think about that, I mean, I could, could say that.
Definitely.
I could make it clear that we have certain contractual obligations that we need to deal with, and we're still grappling with how we're going to deal with them.
There's another piece that, you recall back in, and Mark just raised it, we, back in March, the Board of Finance wanted to know, "How does your budget cover the healthcare cost and make a contribution to health benefits?" And based on what they had gotten to at that point, we showed them that we would end up with paying the locked-in forecast and a surplus of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
I don't really want to get into that and...
Well, yeah, except that if we have to cut things, that three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is low-hanging fruit, because it doesn't involve...
Right.
People.
Jaime, I'm sorry.
So, what, I mean, what, what can they, to, what is this presentation for? Can they take action on anything that you say?
This is, yeah.
Or not say? Because if you say, "Okay, this is what we have," what can they say?
They can't tell us how to cut our budget. They have no say over line item.
Then you go and tell them, "This is what we have."
But, but they could say they maybe have cut a little too deep.
We could say that.
Yes, I mean, we're, they're talking about a one point three, three percent increase in our budget and a what, four point three percent increase in the town's budget?
Well, yes, you can say that.
I mean, I have no comment on whether that's fair to the town or not, I'm just saying that, why did they cut the town by a hundred thousand dollars and cut us by more than three hundred thousand?
That doesn't even seem relevant, look at the size of the budgets.
I think that was part of the reason they gave, was the size.
Yeah, I mean, you...
But...
They cut it more because it's bigger?
Yes, I think they said that.
Right.
You've got to do more things.
That's what they said.
That's why it's bigger, it's bigger for a reason.
Yes, but, so, so, so Jaime, all, they have to have a public hearing, according to town charter, before they go to referendum. And they, and they have to, and they have the opportunity after a public hearing, and the reason they're having another public hearing is because the budgets went down in June. So, they're having a public hearing, and after a public hearing, the Board of Finance has the opportunity to go back and make any adjustments to the bottom line of the budgets that they're going to present to the voters to vote on. This is what this is about.
We may still face further reductions in them?
Potentially. So, so what I'm hearing from folks is that I should go tomorrow night as the Chair of the Board of Ed and testify and say that, that the proposed idea to cut us even further is really, there's no way to deal with those cuts without it affecting the classroom. Whether it's a teacher, or support staff, or a program, or a role in the school that helps the school run smoothly and the kids get what, and kids and teachers get what they need, and that we have contractual obligations that we need to deal with, and we understand that they want to cut us more, and we're, we could respectfully say, we'd prefer, we're asking you not to. And we could leave it at that. Other people from the public can go testify, anybody sitting in this room could go testify and say something. Anybody listening to this could go testify and say anything they want. I am sure there will be people testifying tomorrow night who will say that we should be cut, and we should be cut even more. And I'm sure there will be people testifying tonight who will say, "We shouldn't be cut and there should be money added." It could go, and there could be, and, and don't forget, it's not just this Board of Ed budget, it's the town budgets too, so. Sad. Any further discussion?
No.
I would really hope that some people would show up and testify in support of the schools, in support of the school budgets, and talk about what we need to run our schools properly. Yes, Mike?
Here's the problem, I, I don't think it's people don't support the schools. I think it's, they don't support the perception, the way the money's being spent, positions that we've got, and maybe we're overspending on certain positions rather than splitting it into other positions, smaller programs with, you know, higher dollar, people in them positions. I, I think that's, that's what people are looking at. They're, you know, they're not looking at powers, they're not looking at your support staff, they're not looking at teachers in specific areas. I think they're looking at some specialty areas and some, you know, areas like that, that we're, we're spending good money on, on single positions. I mean, that's, that's what I've been hearing.
Well, I think it's, our job as Board of Ed members to sell the budget to the public... public, um, and to ask them to, to, to trust, you know, when I talk to somebody, ask them to trust me, Mary asks them to trust you, Mike asks them to trust you, and if people don't like the way that the Board of Ed is running the, the schools, then they don't have to vote for us and/or they could run themselves. At this point, we know who the slates are going to be for this year, yeah, I think they're all done now, so people have choices, they can make them. Let's just hope that they support the budgets.
When are we having our public forum?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Where and when?
We don't know, it's in the evening, we decided at six thirty, we're working on getting a location.
Seventeenth.
Not the seventeenth, yeah. Um, okay, any further discussion on this, or can we, yes?
I guess to Mike's point, I'd like to say one thing, and that is, I would hope that people would recognize that voting no on a budget is essentially dumping on kids. If they're unhappy with what the Board of Ed is doing and the way the schools are running, the time to vote no is in November. That's, that's when you elect people to be on the Board of Ed, put people on the Board of Ed that'll run the school district the way you want it run. Don't, don't mess with what the school district is doing to children.
Okay.